Good evening. I would call the meeting to order and welcome everyone to the Bagota Board of Education's regular virtual meeting, March 16th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Please stand through the flags loop.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public who have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Bagota Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the Bagota Borough Hall, communicated by letter to the record, filed with the car of the Borough of Bagota, and posted on the Bagota Board of Education website. Ervin, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Albers. Mrs. Cole.
Here.
Mrs. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Miranda.
Here.
Ms. Montgomery.
Here.
Mr. Ortega.
President.
Ms. Rickett.
President.
Mr. Chavez.
President.
Mrs. Van Buren.
President.
The full board, call them.
Thank you. Also present are Mr. Kennedy Superintendent, Sarah Goldberg, who is standing in for Ms. Simon this evening as our attorney, Elsie Luque, student congress representative, Mr. Eppsell, our school business administrator and board secretary, and Elizabeth, who is our assistant board secretary. We will now have hearing of citizens' comments on agenda items only, please. You will need to state your name and address, and also if you submit any questions in the Q and A, please also state your name and address, so that's consistent with public comments. If there's anyone who has any comments, or may I have a motion, please? I'm sorry.
Motion Chavez.
Thank you. Second.
Lisa, second.
Thank you, Lisa. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Mr. Kennedy?
I do see Elsie Luque is our student rep, and she just put in the chat, "Good evening, dear members of the board. My name is Elsie Luque. I'm a student congress rep. If you have any questions about clubs, please let me know. I'm here to happily answer." So if anyone has any questions for a student rep, you can bring that up too. But I reached out to her and she said she was gonna try and get here, so thank you very much, Elsie.
Yes, thank you, Elsie. Anyone else? No hands?
She just wrote a course.
Okay, great. All right, I just see no one else coming forward. If I have a motion to close citizens' comments, please?
Motion.
Thank you, Frank. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Kennedy, superintendent's report.
Yeah, I got a couple of things. First, obviously, this morning, we sent out notification, we had three positive cases in the high school. So we dealt with the health department, we did our contact tracing. Our contact tracing led us to shut down the girls volleyball team for two weeks because students were in contact. The questions I had was, what about our other sports? The health department felt that these cases were connected right now, so we were able to continue on with our other sports right now, which just happens to be wrestling, who won their first match night, and girls' middle school volleyball. What I'm gonna look at tomorrow is, we have a virtual day in the high school tomorrow, we have to see how many teachers are quarantining, not only because of this incident, but because of other incidents that have happened not related to school issues, whether it's a family member and their house is tested positive, or they've come in contact with someone from work, from somewhere else. So we're gonna look at that. If we do not have enough staff to open, we might keep the high school closed for an extra week until more staff members come out of quarantine. But we're gonna make that decision tomorrow after looking at who's coming off of quarantine, who's coming in. I wanna stress in the high school, though, today, there was a total of 16 kids came in. So the kids are not coming to school right now because a lot of kids are not coming to school. We're hoping, right, that in the future, that our students are gonna start coming back when they feel that it's safe. I wanna stress, we have not seen a transmission in school. We haven't seen that. We've been fortunate with that. Our elementary schools will remain open, and we will continue with the two cohorts rotating, three in-person instructions a week moving forward. My hope is to get to our spring break. By that time, vaccinations, this week alone, I know a bunch of teachers already got appointments. The county set something up for us on Saturday. We were able to send eight staff members to get vaccinated this weekend. Our hope is that the county's gonna continue opening up slots for educators in Bergen County, and then we send the educators there, and they got. I got my first dose today in Essex County, so my arm's a little sore, but so far, so good. But I wanna stress this, like, the high school students had no symptoms. Who the person got it from had no symptoms, so it's very hard for students to know whether or not they have it and come to school or go to a practice. So it's, we're just gonna have to continue monitoring and doing what we have to do. I also wanna stress to the community, because I have reached out with some phone calls and received some emails. We are a full year into this right now. We've been doing this for a year. It's almost too normal for us, and I wanna stress that the end is near, like, that we're starting to see some light at the end of the tunnel. The more the teachers get vaccinated, the more we're gonna be able to offer more in-person instruction. A question that I get all the time is, if I wanna remain virtual, my child, can I keep them? As of right now, that answer is yes. So even if we offer a full-day in-person instruction, you say, "Look, I don't think it's safe to go back. I wanna keep my kid home." You will have that option. But we're gonna go through the next three weeks, we're gonna get to spring break, we're gonna get back to school, and we're gonna look to see what the numbers are. Hopefully, we have more teachers vaccinated. Hopefully, we can offer more in-person instruction five days a week by combining cohorts. That's my plan, okay? But the data is going to direct us whether or not we're gonna be able to do that. We were fortunate, for example, just one final thing, and I'm gonna get off of this, of the person that came into contact with the teachers, if this was two months ago, we would've had to close the school immediately, but luckily, three teachers were vaccinated already, so they don't have to quarantine. Another two teachers had it already, so they didn't have to quarantine. So instead of nine teachers quarantining today, we're only quarantining about four. So combining that with other cases that we have from outside of the district will determine whether we can open. So just keep, continue working with your kids. We're doing our best. I know parents are doing their best. We're getting to the end of this, and let's just keep fighting it.
Thank you very much.
Kathy, you have a question for Mr. Kennedy?
Yes, please.
Mr. Kennedy, during the practice, do the children have to wear masks?
They're not, they don't have to, no, because once they're in their cohort, they don't have to. They should wear it, though, when they're, like, on the bench and things of that nature, but for the most part, they're in their cohort. I'm almost 100% positive, they do not have to. Even if they're wearing a mask, they still would have to quarantine, unfortunately, because they're within six feet.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, if we can move on to the minutes, we have the minutes for February 9th, the work session, excuse me, open and closed, as well as February 23rd, the regular meeting, open and closed. May I have a motion to accept the minutes, please?
Motion Miranda.
Thank you, Frank. Second.
Second Chavez.
Thank you. Any discussion? Right, if no discussion, Ervin, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Albers.
For the 23rd, yes. For the 9th, I am saying I wasn't here.
Mrs. Cole.
Yes.
Mrs. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Miranda.
Yes.
Ms. Montgomery.
Yes.
Mr. Ortega.
Yes.
Ms. Rickett.
Yes.
Mr. Chavez.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Buren.
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you. All right, moving on to the consent.
Madam President, excuse me, Kathy?
Yes.
I would like to move to move the agenda this evening, to list the matter of the appointment of the position of the attorney of the Bagota Board of Education, with the intent that the matter be moved and voted upon following this evening's executive session.
I would like to second that.
All righty, any discussion? All righty, that would be a goal, but if we have legal matters that come before us, obviously, we'll need to discuss that. Are we still proceeding with the interviews as planned?
I believe we should.
All righty. We'll also need to address the fact that if we choose to make, to take that action this evening, it will be a matter of the period of the appointment time, because you can't appoint an attorney for more than a year. So the element, that element has to be discussed. Personally, school boards frown on this, our field reps frown on this, I have it in writing, but majority rules. I think it's, it's an insult to the attorney, and it's poor business on our part to be doing something so hasty and not, not follow through and let the attorney finish the contract period. But you have a motion on the floor? I've said my piece. Any other? Question?
Kathy, we can choose to hire, but we can also choose to keep her till the end of the school year. That's what we discussed last time, correct?
If she were to choose to do so. I don't know that that's the case.
Great.
All right. Any other discussion? Ervin, do you, did you get that? Would you like to read, could it be read back to us, or can I have Jose?
I couldn't hear fully, Mr. Chavez, so if he can repeat, so I can read it now.
Elsie, would you repeat it, please?
The motion.
Maybe it was Jose?
No, he's there.
Mr. Chavez, I guess frozen.
Well, we don't have a clear, clean resolution on the floor unless someone else knows it. Frank, do you have that wording?
I do not, but I can, I heard that he stated something about amending the agenda to move the voting of an attorney or acceptance today after executive session, something in that. I'm assuming whoever is in place of Nathania can basically explain that.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure what you mean by explain.
I know, this is a little vague. I really need to hear the resolution again. John, you seconded. Do you have that resolution?
I do not.
It's pretty easy to word.
So the motion is to amend the agenda. I can't hear you, Frank. Frank? Frank, you're muted. Frank?
One second, one second.
There you go. Now we got you.
I don't know why, yeah, it's, although, I can hear a lot of noise, I'm not sure why. I believe what he said was amend the agenda this evening, if I can word it, for the appointment of attorney today after executive session. I don't have the exact, but I think we should maybe give him a minute, as vice president to log back on.
I'm okay with that.
Jose, are you on? Some, can someone call? Hold on.
You call. Forgive us, everyone.
Jose, are you back on? The public is waiting. Okay, okay. He stated he's logging back on.
Okay, okay.
Does everyone have headphones, just because we are getting some feed?
You know, I don't have mine on. Let me get mine on. Excuse me.
Without the headphones, it was hard to hear.
Yeah, there's a lot of feedback.
Yeah.
That could be my end, I'm sorry. Bear with me one second. I started up without them, so.
We can hear you better.
Okay, is this better? Did I cut the static out a little?
Yep, yep, great.
It was me, I'm sorry.
High board members, Jose just, Jose, are you on the line?
Yes, I'm here.
So, so it turns, yeah, Jose is stating that somehow he's logging on. Can you hear us?
I can hear you, yes. I can't hear him.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yes, you're back.
Okay, all right, perfect.
Could you just read the resolution again, please, what you're amending, what you wish to amend?
Absolutely. I wanna move to amend this evening's agenda, to list the matter of the appointment of the position of the attorney of the Bagota Board of Education, with the intent that the matter be moved and voted upon following this evening's executive session.
Ervin, do you have that?
I specifically ask for all the members understanding what they're wording for, actually. So if everybody understands, we can have the reporting right now.
All right, so we're making a motion to amend the agenda? I have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? All right, Ervin, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Albers.
Yes.
Mrs. Cole.
No.
Mrs. Lewis.
No.
Mr. Miranda.
Yes.
Ms. Montgomery.
No.
Mr. Ortega.
Yes.
Ms. Rickett.
Yes.
Mr. Chavez.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Buren.
No.
Five yes, four no, majority. If this is a majority wording, then motion carry.
All righty, so we'll be moting, and we're going to proceed with the interviews. Is that correct?
It says after the executive session.
Okay.
After the interviews.
All right, just so long as we're not wasting our time. If I can move then back to the agenda. On policy, numbers, resolution numbers 3162101 through 3162121. May I have a motion, please?
Motion Amanda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion? All right, roll call, please, Ervin?
Mrs. Albers.
Yes.
Mrs. Cole.
Yeah.
Mrs. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Miranda.
Yes.
Ms. Montgomery.
Yes.
Mr. Ortega.
Yes.
Ms. Rickett.
Yes.
Mr. Chavez.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Buren.
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you. All right, moving to education. Education has three resolutions listed under consent, but I'd like to do just the two first. The third one has a new item added to it, so let's just do the two that are, have been unchanged. So on resolutions 3162122 and 2123, may I have a motion, please?
I have a question.
Sure. Is it on this? Could we get it on the floor first, please?
Oh, okay.
Sure, just a moment.
Motion Miranda.
Thank you, Frank. In a second?
Second Chavez.
Thank you. All right, Adalia?
Okay, on 3162123, it's about the approval of the SAT courses, and it says over here, winter and spring of this year. My question is as to when would those courses exactly begin, because we're already mid-March.
I believe that there's another one, there's another one coming up. They give one every month moving forward, so I believe in April, May, and June, and they have crash courses that you could do virtually, and they also are offering some type of in-person, not on our site, but somewhere else. So it's the company that we've used in the past.
So this is not through the school?
No, it's through an outside source.
Just for outside source. And we, the company we've always used in the past.
And how much would this cost the students if they wanted to take this course?
I don't have that exact number. It all depends what course they take. It might be like $100, $150 usually what the SAT courses cost.
Oh, okay, because I thought they went up to $500, and the SATs are already given. I mean, I know that testing is coming up pretty soon. There was a testing schedule for this past weekend that was canceled, everything was canceled, and this is coming up in about a month, so the kids need these prep courses, like, right away.
Correct, so that's why this is a.
And if it's costing them money, then this makes it very hard for kids to be able to take these courses. Can the school please offer something that is open to every single student who is taking the SATs, in which money will not be an issue?
We could try, but we have to pay teachers to teach those classes. So the teachers are available for extra help some days, so if they're struggling with certain things, but I can see if we could do a crash course, something, a couple-hour prep course, that won't cost us too much, much money to run, to help with some of these students.
That would be very beneficial, because just like there's stipends for everything else, there should be maybe stipends that are put aside to be able to pay these teachers to help the students do well on, on the SATs. It's something extremely beneficial.
Yeah.
And putting something out there that the kids are gonna have to pay, it's, it's very hard.
I think in the past, we've, we offered some classes during the year, but because of numbers, we weren't able to run them. So we did offer a few SAT prep classes during the year, but because students didn't sign up for them, we didn't run them this year. So, and in the past, teachers have always been available after school from 2:40 to 3:10 to help with students with that, and they do some SAT prep in class, but obviously, I think this year is a different year. So I would have to look a little bit further into that to see if we could get some crash course before test in June.
That would be great. All right, anyone else? All right, Ervin, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Albers.
Yes.
Mrs. Cole.
Yeah.
Mrs. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Miranda.
Yes.
Ms. Montgomery.
Yes.
Mr. Ortega.
Yes.
Ms. Rickett.
Yes.
Mr. Chavez.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Buren.
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you. Moving to resolutions 3162124, which has been amended with one additional item added, through 26, may I have a motion, please?
Motion Ortega.
Thank you, John. Second.
Second Amanda.
All right, any discussion? Roll call, please, Ervin?
Mrs. Albers.
Yes.
Mrs. Cole.
Yeah.
Mrs. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Miranda.
Yes.
Ms. Montgomery.
Yes.
Mr. Ortega.
Yes.
Ms. Rickett.
Yes.
Mr. Chavez.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Buren.
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you. Moving on to personnel, resolutions 3162127 and 28, may I have a motion, please?
Motion Amanda.
Thank you, Amanda. Second. Adalia. Thank you. Discussion?
Kathy, I'd like.
Yes, yes, please.
Louis Ramirez, happy retirement and thank you for many years of service.
Okay. Thank you.
I did wanna say that we had a bunch of retirees this year, that because of Zoom meetings and things like that, that hopefully in June, that we will be able to properly address all these retirees that have been in the district for a number of years, and give them a proper send-off.
Thank you. All right, Ervin, could we have a roll call on 27 and 28?
Sure. Mrs. Albers.
Yes.
Mrs. Cole.
Yes.
Mrs. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Miranda.
Yes.
Montgomery.
Yes.
Mr. Ortega.
Yes. Ms. Rickett.
Yes.
Mr. Chavez.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Buren.
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you. And 3162129 and 3162130, may I have a motion on those two, please?
Miranda.
Thank you. Second.
Chavez.
Thank you. Discussion? I'd just like to repeat Lisa's sentiments. Louis's been with us for a long time, his children went through the, the district, I'm sure Central Office will miss his wife's baking at Christmas time, and we wish him well, as well as Ms. Collins, school nurse in Bigsby, both of them happiness in their retirements. May I have a roll call, Ervin?
Mrs. Albers.
Yes.
Mrs. Cole.
Yeah.
Mrs. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Miranda.
Yes.
Ms. Montgomery.
Yes.
Mr. Ortega.
Yes.
Ms. Rickett.
Yes.
Mr. Chavez.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Buren.
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you. Moving on to finance, resolution 3162131 through 3162140. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
BC, thank you. Second.
Chavez.
Thank you. Discussion? No discussion? Okay, Ervin, roll call, please.
Mrs. Albers.
Yes.
Mrs. Cole.
Yes.
Mrs. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Miranda.
Yes.
Ms. Montgomery.
Yes.
Mr. Ortega.
Yes.
Ms. Rickett.
Yes.
Mr. Chavez.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Buren.
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to committee reports. John, if you could report on finance?
Yes, we met, the finance committee met on Monday, March 15th of 2021. We spoke briefly about and reviewed the proposed budget. Further details can be found on resolution 3-16-2138. Thank you.
Thank you, John. And BC?
So the, uh, negotiation committee, we met, we have spoken, um, a number of times and we pulled together our presentation for the group. I expect to have that discussion later this week, if not early next week.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Kathy, I attended the library meeting.
Yes, Lisa.
Um, it was a quick meeting. They discussed the passports that, um, they have a lot of people coming in for passports because they're basically the only library that is doing them in Bergen County. Um, they also said that they had digitalized the, we go to high school yearbook, many of the yearbooks that they have now. And they have many people that joined on. And they asked if possibly, I don't know how we could possibly do this, but we spoke about COVID and the senior citizens and how a lot of seniors don't have computer access to sign on to try to get their vaccines. So maybe we could work in conjunction with the library to possibly get a list of seniors. They want to know maybe if students could help them, you know, make appointments for them. I said I'd discuss it and maybe we could figure something out. Because they don't have any access and if they don't have any family around or, you know, they're not signing up for their vaccine.
All right, Damian, can, would you address that or perhaps Sarah could address that?
I guess we could, we could talk about it. They could talk about it with the principals and, you know.
Okay.
And that was about it.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? All right, anything under old business? All right, anything under new business? All right, if not at this time, uh, we'd like, we have three attorney firms that we will be having, uh, have interviews scheduled with. I apologize, the first one is scheduled right now. So, um, Frank will be having that firm access to join us. Um, I, I put together the questions that everyone submitted to me and there were five people that submitted questions, so I've assigned names. Hopefully you all have a worksheet that I, I sent you all uh, to read the question. I gave you space to write answers. Um, and it was printable if you wanted to print one for each firm. So we can go through them all. Our first fir- firm, excuse me, is Cleary, Giacobi, Alfieri and Jacobs. And I guess we just need for Frank to have him join us. It's Mr. Giacobi.
Hi, this is Frances Fabres and my colleague Mark Wenzel of Cleary Giacobi Alfieri Jacobs. Matthew Giacobi was on, but he had to, um, leave. Uh, but Mark and I are here to answer your questions so that you can get an understanding of our firm, the work that we do and a little bit about ourselves as well. And I'm happy to be here. First off, hello, good evening. Um, and it's a pleasure to be here before you, virtually.
Yes, thank you. Thank you and good evening. I'm Kathy Dan Buren. I'm currently the president of the board. Um, our board members, you can see seated around your screen there, um, to save time. Would you like some formal introductions or can we just move on to some questions? Can you see each of the members so you can see who they are?
Yes, we can see them.
Okay, great. Um, we have fifteen minutes and five questions. So if we could stick, you know, we'll just have each board member, each member will ask you a question. If you could just stick to the answer and then we'll move on to another question. Time permitted, then we can do it if you have some closing statements to make before we close up. All righty. Thank you so much. Um, Jose?
Mr. Giacobi, how are you? Very nice to meet you. Uh, my name is Jose Chavez. I'm the current vice president of the Board of Education. Uh, my question is, uh, simple. Um, explain your firm's experience in providing day-to-day legal counseling on a sitting board attorney to pre-K public education districts, including who will represent us at our public meetings and who will represent us if that person is unavailable?
So we represent several schools around the state, uh, many in Bergen County, um, K through twelve as well. I have been practicing school law for almost ten years now. My colleague, Mark Wenzel, and he can speak for his experience. He's also very proficient as well. As board attorney, uh, we will attend your meetings if you would ask us to. Some board members do not, um, some do, so we leave it to your discretion, but happy to be here. Uh, and of course, if you would look, would like an attorney at every meeting, I would be the person who would attend. If I am absent, either Matthew Giacobi or Mark Wenzel would attend in my place. You will not have a rotating door of attorneys. You will be working with attorneys consistently so that we will also develop a relationship with you. Um, also really get to know the district really well. Um, I have to say, I actually went through the Bogota School District myself, graduated in two thousand and three. So, you know, I'm very fond of Bogota. Parents are still residents there. Um, so, you know, definitely holds a special place in my heart. But for our clients, we do take pride in establishing those relationships, working really well with district administration, board presidents and vice presidents in all aspects of education, from personnel to students and special education, from contract negotiations, but also administrative contracts. We really run the gamut. Um, and we are very, very, um, cooperative and very communicative and we take pride in also being responsive. But I do want to, um, turn it over to my colleague, Mark Wenzel, for his response as well.
And I could just echo what Francis, uh, has said, uh, that, uh, we are a, uh, uh, an established uh, education law firm, as you can verify by looking at our website. We have forty-eight attorneys, approximately ten or more of whom are dedicated to, uh, school law exclusively. Uh, as Francis had indicated, Francis, if, if we are fortunate enough to be given the opportunity, Francis, her hometown, would be dedicated to, to servicing, uh, the board. But we have a deep bench and you would, uh, uh, establish deep relationships with the attorneys who service the account. You'd also have backup attorneys in the, in the event you ever needed, uh, uh, backup assistance. But so, you know, some of the boards that we represent in the area, uh, we represent Lodi, Ridgefield, uh, Elmwood Park. Um, you know, we, and we have a diverse array of, of, uh, boards that we represent throughout the state. And, uh, I've been practicing law, uh, since nineteen ninety-two, been practicing school law since two thousand and two. Uh, I have been with the firm, uh, not as long as Francis. I've been with the firm several years. Uh, but I had, uh, been representing, uh, school boards for a long time and I've represented, uh, Bloomfield, uh, at my other firm, Belleville, uh, Westwood, um, the Caldwell's, Nutley. And, uh, I've had practiced in all areas of school law, uh, in, and, and taken cases, you know, through, from administrative hearings, uh, up through the appellate division, um, mediations, working with child study teams and special education departments to stay out of court and, and, um, and stay on top of all the regulations and, and all the work that is required to effectively operate a school district, uh, in one of the most litigious states in the country for, uh, education and special education law in particular. So.
Thank you. Thank you.
Limited time, so.
Yes. Not to rush you, but I don't want you to miss out on the questions. Um, Eileen, if you would proceed next?
Do you see any real or perceived conflicts of interest that would exclude you from representing the board in any way? Including but not limited to with other boards or agencies?
No, not that I'm aware of. Mark?
No, no, not at all. I don't believe that we would.
Great, thank you. Frank? Frank?
Uh, Mr. Miranda, you're on mute.
Sorry, I apologize. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, please review your specific experience with pre-K through twelve public education, sunshine law, policy issues, collective bargaining, perk hearings and arbitration. And keep it short because you're about to miss out.
Okay, so pre-K, yes, we represent a number of districts that have pre-K programs, um, some for tuition, some special ed programs. Um, K through, so pre-K through twelve, one of those would be Elmwood Park, Lodi. Um, I represent also Sussex Wantage. So, you know, issue by issue, whether it's especially now COVID related, right? How to ensure students are learning in a safe and healthy environment. So, you know, keeping the board and the school administration abreast of that. Um, arbitrations, yes, as from personnel to negotiations, we have a vast amount of experience, special education. And I want to echo what, what Mark had mentioned before. What, a lot of what we do and most of what we do is prevent lawsuits, right? We want to be proactive. We want to work with your school administration, make sure that all the regulations are being complied with as it concerns personnel, which is a big issue right now because of the COVID and the leave necessities that are arising, right? We want to make sure that you are ensuring that the employees' rights are being protected, but also ensuring that operatively you are able to keep your doors open as well and have the staff that you need. So it's a balancing act. But we do that and we work very closely with school administration. Um, you had mentioned HIB, for instance, we go to, before the Commission of Education very often, uh, lap motion, uh, practice. But also we are very well versed in hearing practice as well, um, trials as well. I have an HIB that uh, morphed into a lad claim before the Superior Court. So we, we have a, a great litigation department as well. So from litigation to negotiations, Matthew Giacobi is probably one of the best-known negotiators in the state. Um, hundreds of contracts he negotiates. Um, right now we're in negotiation season, so, uh, we are also in the midst of that. Again, it's, we, we pretty much have a full-service law firm, but we also have attorneys within our school firm that also specialize in certain areas. So if you have public contracts issues, for instance, we have attorneys who specifically uh, specialize in that. We also have a partner who's not only a lawyer, but an engineer. So we have attorneys who are specialized in Oprah. We have, you know, I, myself, Mr. Giacobi, Mr. Wenzel. We are also very proficient in the Open Public Meetings Act. We will work with the board to ensure that you also know, you know, we, we give trainings as requested. Um, but we want to make sure that everything is being complied with. So we want to make sure that we are getting, feeding the right people to the particular issues that you need, but we're, we are here. And because we also work with so many school districts, we have a lot of experience, right? Where others may bill you for, uh, you know, hours and hours worth of research. Likely we've seen this issue before, right? Obviously every school district is different. Every issue is different. So we're going to tailor it to your specific needs. But the efficiency that we can bring to the table because of our experience and the depth of our involvement in these various issues, I believe is an asset.
Thank you. John?
Thank you for being here tonight. My question is, please explain your experience with public schools, facility projects, referendums and financing.
Sure. Um, so facilities projects, for instance, we have a number of school districts that also underwent referendas to, um, expand their facilities projects. We, in Elmwood Park, they just acquired a building to expand their eighteen and twenty-one-year-old program. Um, you know, as far as it requires going before the planning board and before the Commission of Education for the long-range facilities plans. Yes, we definitely have that experience. We also have a real estate department. Brian Chakowsky of our firm is ve- very well known in planning and real estate for the public sector. So again, we go back to the attorneys that specialize in their particular areas because we don't want to be, um, what is it? A, um, master of none, right? A jack-of-all-trades master of none. We want to make sure that you are being provided with the guidance and advice of attorneys who really know their stuff. Um, so I, I hope that answered your question. Um, Mark, Wenzel, do you have anything to?
No, and, and again, in the interest of time, I think you've covered it. I mean, we, we do have. We, we have the coverage. We have the attorneys and, and as Francis says, we're, we, we are large enough and experienced enough uh, to not have to be a jack-of-all-trades and to have attorneys who have expertise, uh, in, in the areas that come up that, all of the areas that come up in the operation of a school district.
We had one and just, um, Morrison and Jointure wanted to open up a program where they modeled, um, shop rights, right? So that required a long-range facilities use plan amendment. But it's just really interesting things of, you know, how school districts can shape their, um, environments in schools to really, um, uh, complement and to expand the programming of their students. So yes, we, we, we are here. We can definitely help you with your needs.
Thank you. And last question, and I see we have about five minutes left, BC?
Yes, actually, I have, um, two questions, but I will narrow it down to one in the interest of time. Um, how do you guys calculate your charges to the board? And do you have like any specific charges like travel?
Okay. So our charge, so and our bills were very specific in what we bill for. Um, it's itemized. It's point six of an hour. It's a tenth of an hour. Um, but you're gonna get a clear description of what it is. Now, we also have to be mindful of FERPA and the personnel rights of your employees. So where it's a matter that involves a personnel question regarding leave, we're going to be descriptive enough, but we're not going to mention the employee. And I rarely include the initials because I do want to protect that privacy. But it will be descriptive enough that the, um, board and the administration will be able to understand the work that was conducted. And of course, where there's any questions, um, do not hesitate to contact us. As far as travel, we generally do not. Um, if it's someplace, um, like, uh, that's very specialized perhaps, but if it's for commute to a board meeting to meet with employees or district administrators, that is not included in our billing.
Can I just add one, one thing that I, that is, is somewhat related to the billing question? And that is that, and, and to the, uh, uh, number of attorneys that we have in the firm. We have one attorney who, who predominantly practices just in the area of responding to Oprah requests. And I don't, I, I don't know if you're besieged, if you ha- if you're lucky or unlucky enough to have a, someone in your community who, who besieges you with Oprah requests. Um, you know, we, we are, uh, you know, effective at not a, a, at drafting responses that are responsive, but also preserve all, all privileges and protections that the board and the board employees are, uh, require.
Thank you very much. All right. Well, we've got about three minutes to go. We started two minutes late. I forgot to put my timer on, but I'm watching my computer clock. So is there anything, um, either one of you would like to offer in addition to us rushing you through those questions? Any, anything else about your firm or?
Um, just again, that, you know, it's a pleasure being here this evening and to give our firm the opportunity. We do take great pride in what we do. Um, it's, I really enjoy the work that I do as well. Uh, it was unlikely area of law, but when I came to it, I, I realized that it really wasn't anything that I could give up. Um, one, because of the diverseness of the issues within school law, working to assist public entities, boards of education in trying to enhance, um, their educational program for students in the different issues are constantly coming up, knowing that each school district is unique, being able to have the opportunity to be creative with district administrators and board members and to how to mold that program specifically to those children and to make sure that, you know, the employees and the district administration are working cohesively. And however we can help to achieve those goals, it is our pleasure to do so. Um, so again, thank you. I'm gonna turn it over to Mark, see if he has any last, any comments.
Uh, not to repeat, I would just echo everything that Francis just said. Also say that, that, uh, in addition to, uh, performing excellent legal services, uh, we do pride ourselves on our, uh, client relations and our responsiveness and our availability and accessibility. Um, you would have our cell phone numbers and we've, we are available twenty-four seven uh, for any i- i- issues that arise that need to be discussed, when they need to be discussed. So, um, we, I, again, thank you for the opportunity to interview with you. I, I agree with Francis. It would be a delight to have the opportunity to represent, uh, the Bogota Public Schools.
Thank you very much. It was a pleasure, but speaking to both of you. Um, Mr. Epsel will be in touch with, with, uh, the firms afterwards, once we've reached decision. All right?
Thank you so much.
Have a great evening. You too now. Thank you so much. All right, our next firm is a Williams Sukis from Noel, PA. Maybe I can remember my timer this time. I have one.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening. Mr. Sukis? Yes, good evening. My name is Kathy Van Buren. I'm currently the president of the board. Um, we have about a fifteen-minute window here. Thank you. We're running a couple minutes late. Uh, we have five questions that, uh, different board members will be asking you. So if you could address each of the board members as they go through. And if we finish up in time, um, you know, if you'd like to make some closing statements at the end of the meeting. So, um, with that, if I may introduce the board, as you can see them faced around you. Uh, Mr. Chavez and they, to expedite things, I will move through, forward to Mr. Chavez, who's my vice president, and he'll be asking the first question.
How are you, Mr. Sukis?
Very nice to see you, Mr. Chavez.
Very nice to see you. Um, explain your firm's experience in providing day-to-day legal counsel as a sitting board attorney from PK to twelve public education districts, including who will represent us at the public meeting and who will represent us if that person is unavailable?
Thank you, Mr. Chavez. Again, my name is Bill.
My computer just froze. Okay.
I'm a partner at the Noel Law Firm in. Can you hear me?
Mine's freezing. How about everybody else?
I'm also freezing. I even went off camera and I didn't choose that. I don't know what's going on.
Okay, am I back for everybody?
Yes. Can you start again?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate it and my, my apologies for that. Um, again, my name is Bill Sukis. I'm a partner at the law firm of Noel, uh, Noel, PA in Hackensack, New Jersey. The focus of my representation and my practice is school law and school board representation. I represent public school districts in, in the state of New Jersey. Um, I have represented public school districts as general counsel, as special counsel, as litigation and special education counsel. Um, I have done, I have served in this capacity for over twenty years. In that time, I have seen everything that you're gonna see in terms of school board representation. I've handled and litigated the wide variety of issues that you all know so well, uh, are ever-present when you are a school board. In terms of the team, and then I'll get to the, the substantive issues that you're, that you deal with. I will be primarily responsible for your, for your representation, should we be awarded this contract. I am responsible for handling all new intakes for school, for Board of Education matters. And I will predominantly, uh, dedicate myself to handling those matters in the event that additional assistance is required, whether it's in litigation or another matter. I work with, uh, two individuals who have been identified in my proposal, Jack Zapatachny, who's an associate with the firm and Bradley Wilson, who is a partner of mine. Jack Zapatachny has been practicing law seven or eight years. He's a former law clerk to Judge Jim Satley at the Bergen County Courthouse. Um, he is an excellent researcher and an excellent writer. He has varied litigation experience, both on the plaintiff's side and the defense side. And he's even been a, a public defender in a local town here in Bergen County. He's covered board meetings for me and he's very capable. Bradley Wilson, on the other hand, is a very seasoned litigator. He has one hundred fifty jury trials under his belt. He is also a certified civil trial attorney in the state of New Jersey, uh, designation that is, uh, seen quite rarely among attorneys in New Jersey. As far as school board representation, Bradley has handled board meetings for me. However, he's primarily utilized for litigation purposes. He has defended school districts in tort claims act matters, employment defense matters, including law against discrimination whistleblower claims, civil rights defense litigation matters. And he has handled these matters in state court, federal court, and where appropriate administrative forums like the Office of Administrative Law. Needless to say, with Brad on board, we are not afraid to try any case. And as far as my level of representation, I will be handling board meetings. In the rare event that I'm unable to handle it, it will be either Jack or Brad who will be standing in my stead, and I am comfortable with that. Matters that we've handled as Board of Education attorneys include Open Public Meetings Act or Sunshine Law Matters and Disputes. Open Public Records Act matters, including from intake of the request to formulation of a proper response. We counsel your custody records on how to respond, or alternatively, we're, we're very comfortable framing the response ourselves. We handle the variety of personnel and human resources matters, including employee rights, contract non-renewal, reductions in force, reasonable accommodation, the interactive process, tenure matters, hostile work environment matters, employee leave requests, which needless to say during the COVID pandemic have really occupied human resources people to a significant degree, as well as collective bargaining and negotiations. Okay? At your discretion and at your request, we will be at the bargaining table if need be there with your representative and discussing the contract with the association. We have experience in mediating labor impasse issues where a contract cannot be reached. We also have experience litigating before the Public Employment Relations Commissions on the types of petitions that go before that, that body. Okay? We participate in IEP meetings, providing you with necessary counsel. We, we have participated in mediations of special ed matters as well as litigation matters. And needless to say, we address issues of student rights and discipline, student record issue, including records request. We handle surprise issues, I like to call them, such as the occasional receipt of a subpoena from either the prosecutor's office or from an outside party who is conducting litigation, and we provide counsel on whether to respond, or rather, not rather whether, but how to respond properly. We negotiate and prepare into local services agreements. We review procurement documents under the public school contracts law. And we do contract review work, including lease review, program documents and vendor agreements. We are well versed in the law. We're well prepared to undertake the representation of this board should you should we be fortunate enough to be awarded this contract.
All right, we do have some questions to ask, so. Eileen, you're next, please.
Do you see any real or perceived conflicts of interest that would preclude you from representing the board in any way, including but not limited to with other boards or agencies?
Absolutely not. I, I think that this representation is clear, with the exception of one matter that came to mind as I was preparing for this evening's presentation. Some time ago, during my representation of the Bergen County Special Services School District, I prepared an agreement which the Special Services District has gotten, has, has with the Bogota Board of Education regarding special education programming. I would estimate that that agreement was probably signed back in two thousand eight or so. So in the event there was a dispute over that agreement or there was a renegotiation of the terms, I would be required under my ethical obligation to each client because I continue to represent special services, to recuse myself from that matter. But that is the only potential area of conflict that, that I've identified or I have.
Okay, thank you. Frank?
I wonder if attorneys win this way by just talking, so let me.
We're running out of time. Keep going.
Please review your specific experience with pre-K through twelve public education, sunshine laws, policy issues, collective bargaining, perk hearings and arbitration.
Okay, sure, I'm happy. I've been, again, representing school districts of all sort for quite some time. I've represented the Bergen County Vocational Technical Schools for twenty years, special services for about the same length of time. In the past, I've represented the Hackensack Board of Education. I've also been special counsel to the C Caucus Board of Education. So again, we've, we've seen these issues in the past and we've handled them. When you call me to, to address an issue or with a question, it is likely that I have seen the issue. I'm adept at seeing the issue, understanding the issue, and having been involved for so long, I can often give you prompt, a prompt response so that you can determine the appropriate course of action for you. I have addressed a number of those substantive areas, including the sunshine law and some of the other areas earlier in my presentation. I know you're tight on time, so I don't want to, I don't want to duplicate what I've already said, but I'm happy to answer any questions or requests for clarification you may have. Needless to say, we've been there, we are experienced in it, we know what we're doing, we like what we're doing, and we like, we like creating the relationships with our clients.
Great, thank you. John? John? He's muted.
It happens. All right. Thank you for coming out, William, tonight. I appreciate it. My question is, please explain your experience with public school facilities, projects, referendums and financing.
Thank you, Mr. Ortega. We have extensive experience in the construction, in the school construction arena. It is, as a matter of fact, it's been quite some time now that I look back on my practice and think about that question. It's been some time where I haven't had some form of construction of project that I'm dealing with. We, we provide counsel and advice to our clients from the inception of a project, from the moment the project is conceived by the client throughout the entire process. That includes, okay, evaluation of the project and the feasibility of the project. We, we assist clients in preparations of bid specifications in terms of, in terms of, you know, receiving contractors' bids. We appear on behalf of the client before planning boards for review of capital, for review of the project as a capital improvement project. I am extremely comfortable in that role because for, for about seven years I served as the zoning board attorney in Fair Lawn. So that process is something I'm very familiar and comfortable with. We assist our clients in the submission of applications to the Department of Education for educational adequacy review. We assist our clients in not only receiving the approvals or strike that, receiving the recommendation of the planning board, but also in facilitating permits. Lately, there has been an issue with permitting because the Department of Education is extraordinarily delayed in its processing of construction applications. As a result, we have had to counsel clients and take at least some action to address the issue with local construction officials. So in any event, I've, I've counseled clients on construction of significant projects, including including a project a hundred thousand square feet in size for a new educational building and board offices. And I'm currently involved in a similar sized project as well.
Thank you. BC?
How do you calculate your charges to the board? And do you travel, do you charge for specific items like travel time?
Thank you, Ms. Ruckett. Just to, to go back to Mr. Miranda's comment, I can assure you that we do not charge by the word. So we will not be making any money on that. Our, our hourly rate is one hundred sixty-five dollars, as I mentioned in our proposal. We do charge that across our school board clientele. It does not include travel time. We also, we charge fifty dollars per hour for paralegal time and we charge at our cost for any copying or reproduction that may be required in connection with your representation. And I'm sorry, did I don't know that I mentioned it does not include travel time, which shouldn't be an issue. We're right up the street in Hackensack.
All right, well, we managed to get through that with a couple of minutes to spare. Is there anything else you'd like to add?
Thank you, Ms. Van Buren. I appreciate it. I don't want to take up any more time than I have to. However, it was a pleasure meeting you. It was a pleasure fielding your questions. I hope that I was able to convey to you my willingness and then, and the fact that I do, I, I am hopeful to be awarded with this contract. We are ready to do this work. We are experienced and, and if you get us, you'll be getting our best. Thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you so much for joining us. Take care.
Have a good night, Elle.
You too. Alrighty. Well, now we're a few minutes early for our next firm to come in. Sorry, losing papers. Pardon me?
We're here.
The next firm is ready. We could, if everyone's ready, we'll start.
We're here.
We're ten minutes early, but that's good.
Gives you more, gives you a little extra breathing room.
There you are. Good evening. Welcome. My name is Kathy Van Buren. We have a fifteen minute window here. We have about five questions that different board members would like to present to you. We'll be starting with my vice president, Mr. Chavez, and I introduce the rest of my board, which surrounds you. If that's permissible, so that we don't spend a lot of time on that. Thank you. Mr. Chavez, would you like to start?
Absolutely. Hello, Mr. Gutierrez. How are you?
Hello, how are you?
Good, good. Explain your firm's experience in providing day-to-day legal counseling as a sitting board attorney from pre-K to twelve public education districts, include who will represent us at our public meetings and who will represent us if that person is unavailable.
Very happy to answer those questions. Good evening, everyone. We're from the law firm of Adams, Gutierrez and Ladi Budair. We have been, our actual firm has been in existence for thirteen years now. But all of the, the three owners and all of the, actually, most of the attorneys in the office all have over, well over twenty-five to thirty years of experience. I myself have thirty years of experience as an attorney. All of that dedicated to representing school districts in the state of New Jersey. So we have extensive experience as board attorneys, as special counsel, as labor counsel, as special education counsel. We have probably about forty clients in the state where we represent them in all of those different roles. We are a women and minority owned law firm. We're very proud of our work. And we chose specifically to represent school districts because we, we believe that education is is the future, is, is the present. It's essential and we dedicate our work so that school districts can dedicate their resources to educating children, which is really the whole purpose. We try to be as efficient as possible in order so, in order that you may be able to save your money and spend it on school resources as opposed to creating litigation. We have eleven lawyers in our firm. I would be the primary contact. I would be the one attending your board meetings. If I weren't able to do that, you would have my law partner, Sherri Adams, who's here with us today, or one of our, or our other partner, Perry Ladi Budair, or any one of the other seasoned and very well experienced attorneys. We would never send you somebody who has never, who, who doesn't have experience in representing boards of ed, because we know that at public board meetings, you just never know what's going to happen. You think it's going to be a really quiet meeting and all of a sudden there are issues that pop up and you need somebody that's able to answer questions, deal with the public and represent the board to, to the best possible, in the best possible way. Did I answer your question completely? I think I covered it all.
Yes, thank you.
Eileen, Eileen, please.
Hi. Do you see any real or perceived conflicts of interest that would preclude you from representing the board in any way, including but not limited to with other boards or agencies?
We do not. We took a look before we submitted an RFP and we don't have any conflicts that we can see with representing the Bogota Board.
We do monitor that. Good evening, everyone, but we do monitor that and to the extent that there would be a potential conflict, we are able to address that and would advise the board at the time. But right now, there are none.
Thank you. Frank?
Okay, yes, I apologize. Hi, hello. Please review your specific experiences with pre-K through twelve public education sunshine law, policy issues, collective bargaining and perk hearings and arbitration.
So as I said earlier, we've been, we've been representing school districts for well over thirty years. Collectively, I don't know, over a hundred and fifty years in all areas, certainly from pre-K through twelve. I do a lot of labor negotiations. We have two other lawyers in the firm who dedicate a lot of their time to doing labor negotiations. We have represented our, our clients at PERC at, at the Office of Administrative Law, at Superior Court, in federal court, before the Division on Civil Rights, before the EEOC. So in any agency where a school district is, is being sued, we're, we've been there. I forgot the other piece of your question. What was that? Pre-K through twelve? I apologize for.
Policy items. We're often consulted in terms of developing and, and modifying policies to fit the needs of the district. Arbitrations, that is part of our labor practice as well. You didn't ask about this, but we also do litigation in all forms and in special education in terms of pretty much most of the issues that come up for a school district, we have been involved in and again, try to utilize the experience of the, the partners that we have who have over a hundred and fifty years of experience together to service those needs, whatever the topic.
We also have handled many cases with all of our clients, HIV cases, whether it's representing the board at an HIV hearing before the board, or if it moves into the Office of Administrative Law, we've handled all of those. We've represented our clients in all types of hearings, grievance hearings, residency hearings, disciplinary hearings for students, HIV hearings. All of them. Any, any type of hearing that a board of education has, has to deal with, we've handled that.
Thank you very much. John?
Evening. Thank you for coming out tonight. My question is, please explain your experience with public school, facilities, projects, referendums and financing.
So because we've been representing boards of education for so long, we've actually been involved in some construction projects. We handle, we deal very closely with the architects, with the engineers. We review the contracts. We make changes to the contracts. The AIA contract that architects use is very pro-architect. So we make sure that we revise it so that the board is protected. Right now, I'm representing a district that is in the middle of a referendum. So we've worked closely with their bond counsel to make sure that everything is in place for them to be able to get it passed. I've handled, I've personally handled arbitration matters involving contractors where there's been a problem, where they haven't delivered on time, they haven't done the work properly. And we've been before an arbitrator to handle those cases. So we have extensive experience in, in those types of matters. Sherri, did you want to add something on that?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that other than bond counsel, which we don't provide the financing issue, we do handle projects and facilities issues from all, all aspects. We've helped districts who wanted to get rid of or lease properties. We've helped with environmental issues. I, I am on a board in my town. I have been for a number of time. We just passed a referendum last March, so I'm very familiar with that process and both in the, in that role as a board member as well as in advising boards of education in terms of that process. And so we, and also we're very experienced in terms of if contractors are challenging bid awards or trying to bring things to court. We've been in that situation many times.
Thank you. All right, last question, BC?
You're muted.
Happens a lot.
When the mouse doesn't move.
Okay, how do you guys calculate your charges to the board and do you trap, do you charge for specific items like travel time?
So we charge an hourly rate. We put it in our response to the request for proposals. We charge an hourly rate for, for attorney work, regardless of the experience of the attorney, as well as we charge an hourly rate for paralegal work. We don't charge for travel time. We don't charge for incidental costs like copies and mailings and things like that. If there were, if we were preparing for a trial or something that's very large, that requires a large copying, a large volume of copying, we would charge for that, but before we did that, we would consult with your business administrator, most likely, just to make sure that we're all, you know, that, that it's something that, that's reasonable. We really do try to save trees and try not to make, make copies and use thing, use information digitally as much as possible. But no, we don't charge for incidental costs. We don't charge for secretary work or anything like that.
The only other thing I would add is that I don't think you addressed this early, but we charge in tenths of hours. So it's in anchor, it's in increments of six minutes. So if you have a phone call, it's not necessarily point two five or some other number. They're basically on six-minute increments.
Thank you.
We have a very detailed bill and an invoice that you'll see what the work was done and how much time was spent on it.
All right, great. Well, we have a few more minutes to, to spare. Actually, actually, almost five more minutes. Is there anything else you'd like to say about the firm or anything?
Yeah, there is actually. Just if I could speak for a moment, I just want to let you know our philosophy in terms of when we developed our firm and we all left from other places, but we're very committed to public education. We only represent school districts in, in, in the context that we don't represent anyone against school districts. We are, view ourselves as partners with our Board of Education clients. We try to help you accomplish your educational goals and allow you to focus on educating your children and running your district and try to minimize your legal exposure and liability. So we try to be as preventative as possible. Try to make ourselves available to consult prior to problems arising so that we basically can talk you through a situation, find out where is it you would like to go and help you navigate that course in a way that minimizes your legal exposure. And truly, I don't know if you have something else you want to say.
Well, we wanted to thank you very much for the opportunity to be able to speak with you all in Canute, even if it's only digitally.
Yes.
We appreciate the, the opportunity to share our, our experience with you. And we invite you to contact any of our clients. We gave you a list of them. Contact, you can contact, contact the references that we listed, but certainly you can contact the people, even the people that we didn't list. And they will be, they will give you a good idea of what it's like to have us as their attorneys.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time. Appreciate you sharing some information with us. Thank you so much. Take care.
Thank you.
We'll be in touch one way. Thanks.
Thank you. Bye.
Take care. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Alrighty. Are we back to just us?
Seems like in the public.
Yes, in the public, yep. Which brings me to, I need a motion for hearing of the public, just to give the public. Thank you, Frank. Second? Thank you, John. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alrighty, we'll be opening up for citizens' comments. Please be advised that we will be going into closed session to discuss the firms that just presented to us. So there's really not much we can answer in that regard right now, but if there's any other questions, anyone, please feel free.
I see Sherri got her hand up. Please remember to state your full name and address.
Thank you.
I gotta promote you to panelists, Sherri, so we're gonna see you, just so you're aware.
Call me here, Sherri.
You can leave your camera off and, and just unmute.
Hi, guys. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. Really, Sherri Solomon of 350 Larch Ave. I just wanted to touch on, I think it was mentioned before regarding the seniors needing help going through the vaccination process. So the Bagota Helping Hands, who is, they're now a group of about 21, I believe. They're growing fast, really extraordinary group of young people. And they actually reached out to me. I'm their supervisor and which just means I pretty much just, you know, sign off on their hours, but I try to help them get some ideas for community service hours. But they actually reached out to me regarding that and they said they're happy to, to walk any elderly through the application process and you know, sign them up for the NJ Vaccine Scheduling System. So I have a list from Jeannie Cook. I believe it's updated of the seniors, because when we did the, the care packages over, over the holidays, I still have that list. So if anybody has any suggestions or anything, we have a Zoom meet, myself and the Helping Hands tomorrow. So I think that they wanted to kind of hit the ground running with this and make phone calls and make sure any senior in town has all, all the help that they needed doing this. So if there's anything you'd like me to convey to them or pass right through, I'll be more than happy to do that. So thank you and happy St. Patty's Day, everybody.
Thank you. Anyone else? Just before I go, Lisa, you mentioned, you brought up about the library, bringing that up. Is there some way that Sherri could get in touch with someone at the library to, to network?
Yeah, Chelsea. She can contact Chelsea and arrange something with Chelsea.
No problem. I could definitely do that.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Great thing for the kids to do.
There's one more hand up, it looks like.
Okay, excellent.
Antoinette.
Hi, guys. Antoinette Ramirez, 98 Queen Anne Road. Mr. Kennedy, I didn't completely catch what you said before when you were talking about some students testing positive and then teachers having to quarantine. You said there were only four instead of nine, but I didn't catch why.
Because some of the teachers have been vaccinated and already through their vaccination period, so they do not have to quarantine. And then unfortunately, some of them have also tested positive, so they don't have to quarantine either because they tested positive.
So if they've tested positive in the past and are exposed again?
For 90 days, yes. They are immune to it as of right now from, as per the Department of Health.
Okay, thank you.
And once you get that vaccine, second dose, or the, if you're getting Johnson and Johnson, it's two weeks after the first dose. Or if it's the other two, it's two weeks after the second dose.
And then you don't have to quarantine.
For 90 days right now. So we're still waiting for more guidance on that and it seems to be changing, but as of right now, you're good for 90 days once you get it.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? If not, may I have a motion to close citizens' comments?
Miranda.
Thank you, Frank. Second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, with that, we'll be moving into executive session. Where I see 231 Public on 1975, also known as the Sunshine Law, authorizes a public body to meet in executive or private session under certain limited circumstances. And whereas said law requires the board to adopt a resolution at a public meeting before it can meet in such an executive or private session, now therefore be it resolved by the Bagota Board of Education that it does hereby determine that it is necessary to meet an executive session on March 16th, 2021, at 8:20 PM to discuss matters involving negotiations. The matter discussed will be made public when confidentiality, confidentiality is no longer required and action pursuant to said discussion shall take place only at a public meeting. You have a motion, please?
Motion, Lisa?
Thanks, Lisa. Second?
Second, Adalia.
Thank you, Adalia. Alright, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Alright, I will advise the public action may be taken upon return from executive session, but I really couldn't begin to imagine how long we may or may not be. Might be a brief time, might be a little while. So with that, you've all received a link from Mr. Kennedy. We'll be closing this meeting and rejoining in executive session. Hopefully, we'll be back soon.
Everybody here? Okay. How many people are back? Am I live or am I frozen?
You're good.
Oh, I was just gonna leave. Thank you. Ah, sugar buns. I just lost you.
Motion to open meeting, Kathy. Are we all here? Because I think we're on to the public.
Yes, please one bear with me one second. I just lost my screen again. There we go. All right. Is Mr. Kennedy here?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, thank you. We have a majority back? Alrighty, um, I'd like a motion, please, to reopen meeting.
Miranda.
Second? I'm sorry, who is the second?
Ortega.
Thank you, John. Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, we have a resolution to go on the floor. Who's ever going to take charge of that?
I will take charge of that. Can you hear me?
Yes, just please go slowly enough so Orphan can and I can get it.
Whereas the Board of Education has a need to retain an attorney to serve in the role as counsel for the Board of Education to handle and address all legal matters of the Board of Education. And whereas the Board of Education issued a request for proposal for the position of Board Counsel, Labor Counselor and Special Education Counsel, and conducted interviews of selected applicants on March 16th, 2021. And whereas the Board of Education wishes to appoint William C. Suckus of the law firm of Noel Powell to serve the Board Counsel for all purposes effective immediately. Now therefore, be resolved William Suckus be hereby appointed Board Attorney effective immediately, and be in further resolved that William Suckus shall submit the Board of Education a contract for services and such other documentations as customary required to be submitted by the Board Attorney.
Alright, that would be Resolution 3162141. May I have a second, please?
Second Ortega.
Thank you. Discussion?
Sure, I'd like to say something. So it was brought to my attention just recently that this attorney that Jose William Suckus of the Noel Firm had contributed to the party, the campaign for the four new board members. And I'm not saying that they did anything illegal at all. I just think that their decision to rush this decision and not allow the current attorney to finish out her contract without good cause should demonstrate something to everyone.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yes, here. Amanda, I would love to know when you were notified. It seemed like it was in closed session, and I'm not sure if you're in violation or not. But I figure for the record, we keep that. Second to that.
You could ask your new attorney.
I understand. Second is just my opinion. Second to that, like as you said, it wasn't illegal. The other thing that I want to bring up is that a majority voted of the public for new members to bring on change. Prior to the current attorney, 20 years went on, and all I'm hearing is supposedly there were RFPs. Suppose when we asked of the process initially to bring on RFPs, hold on Kathy, when we brought on RFPs, I recall Mrs. Van Buren saying there wasn't any, but all I'm saying is.
I was wrong.
Okay, I'm just saying that we are also learning. We're new members. We can't be tied to people of the past or things of the past because we don't know if we're learning. We clearly do not know if we are. We're learning through reading, through understanding. For 20 some odd years, someone controlled this board, an attorney. In my opinion, we should go out for RFP every single year to see where the rates are, where the experiences are, that you know. Now we have a blue ribbon school, right? As people have said, so it's just going to get better. I initially had made mention of a previous personnel that we were just trying to go out there and see what the best. We allowed interviews. For as long as I've been living here, which is now 10 years, I have never seen an interview in the Board of Education publicly. And we brought that to the table. That's part of the change that I personally wanted to bring in, open and fair interviews. So I'm glad and I appreciate Kathy for your presidency for having to, you know, to allow us that opportunity to bring this on. I think you were full board in agreement that we should go to RFP, that we should get interviews while other people asked us to provide freebies to the current one. So all that said, we just want to be open and fair and public. And in essence of wasting the public's time of the same discussion over and over again, I felt the need that we needed to pull the trigger and move forward. I don't know about others, but it seems that there's a general consensus. Thank you, Amanda, for pointing that out.
Any other comments?
If I wanted to nominate another attorney, how would I go about doing that?
Orphan, how can she add a name? Could she add a name to that same resolution or just also nominate? To fill that position?
I guess it's about the resolution needs to be voted first, and then if it's not passed, then there would be another resolution.
So it's not possible to add another name at this time?
I mean.
Do we do it similar to how we vote for a president or, you know, of the Board of Ed or? This would be a really good time to have our attorney present.
Yes, it would be.
Except that there is a motion on the floor that has been seconded. So unless I'm missing something from all these meetings I've attended, aren't we supposed to be calling a roll or having discussions about?
Discussion.
Or having discussion about that specific motion. We made a point of asking Jose to read it slowly so you could get it. There wasn't another attorney mentioned in that motion. So either we are having discussion on this motion or we're not.
We can have discussion on this motion to amend.
On the floor.
But it can be amended.
Rules of.
Can be amended under your Robert.
It is on the floor.
It can be amended under Robert's rules.
It can be tabled, Kathy, I believe. I don't believe it could be amended, and I apologize. It's not an attorney.
Every motion could be amended.
So if I amend it to include the attorney of AGNL, would that be possible in addition? And we take a vote on those?
I think I think you have to make a motion to amend it. Someone has to second on. Then you have to vote whether you would like to amend that motion.
Except that there is already a seconded motion on the floor awaiting roll. So yes, you can amend that. But in order to make another motion, we'd have to deal with the one that's on the floor.
You have to finish the first one. Finish that, and then if she would like to amend it again.
Right, well, she can make her own resolution, but there is a resolution on the floor with a second. So it is awaiting nothing more than a roll.
I disagree. Robert's rule said it can be, say it can be amended. It can be amended.
After the motion that's on the floor has been completed, what are you gonna amend? What are you gonna amend if the motion is not completed?
Jose, once we vote on it, it's not a motion on the floor anymore. It's a done deal.
That's right.
You amend the motion. You have to amend it while it's in the process of being of going to vote. We're amending the product going to vote.
Orphan, I think in fair, in fairness to the public, we should, there's a motion, there's a second, and you should call the roll.
I think that we should, I think we should get an attorney's opinion on this because nobody here is an attorney. And it's really frustrating that to listen to this. So I don't know if we can get our actual attorney, Nathania, on the call. Like, that would be, I know that she doesn't really want to be here because of this embarrassing fact that's going on right now, but I think we should do it correctly. So I don't know if Mr. Kennedy, you could please call her.
Mr. Kennedy, can you do that? Where's that book I just printed out? Could you give me that? No, not that. I don't know what to do with it. I just printed out a whole booklet today on the fundamentals of Board of Education. And it talks about amending motions and primary motions and secondary motions and subsidiary motions, all which depend on the main motion before the main motion can be completed. Forgive me. Where's that thing I printed, Jean?
So I actually asked Nathania to come on so that we do this right and that we don't have any mistakes. So she's going to log in right now. We're going to listen to the motion. It was first, it was second, it was first and seconded and then amended. So I just, she wants to hear the motion so that we're doing it right.
Hello, how you still need me?
Yeah, still here.
Still need me, see?
Hi.
Let me see if I can help you replace me. Go ahead.
All right. Nathaniel, we have a motion on the floor for another firm. Thank you for being patient here. The motion specifies the specific firm.
Okay, could I just hear the motion?
Okay. Jose, you got to read it again.
Can you just read it again, Mr. Chavez, please?
Sorry, I've been having issues with this all day.
No, I know. We all do.
Apologize. Whereas the Board of Education has a need to retain an attorney to serve in a role as counsel for the Board of Education to handle and address all legal matters of the Board of Education. And whereas the Board of Education issues a request for proposal for the position of the Board Counsel, Labor Counselor and Special Education Counsel can conduct interviews of select applicants on March 16th, 2021. And whereas the Board of Education wishes to appoint William C. Suckus of the law firm of Noel Powell to serve as Board Counsel for all purposes effective immediately. Now therefore, it is resolved that William C. Suckus be and hereby appointed Board Attorney effective immediately, and be in further resolved that William Suckus shall submit the Board of Education a contract for services as such other documentation as customarily required to be submitted by the Board Attorney.
All right, the question before us, Nathaniel.
What I would recommend also is, did he submit a proposal so you know exactly the terms that you're appointing him on? Is it per his proposal? You should add that. You should add that for his proposal.
Yeah.
So that, you know, the rates don't change and all that. So what is the question?
Their proposals.
Right. The question is that the board is not in agreement who they would like to see as the Board Attorney. Mr. Chavez has made the resolution specific to one attorney. Amanda would like, Amanda would like to have another name placed for consideration as well so that we would vote, I guess, then on both.
Nathania, clarity, excuse me. Nathania, what they're trying to clarify is that Mr. Chavez placed a motion, Mr. Ortega seconded. And Amanda's question is, hey, can I put a motion to amend his current motion to resolute what he has on hand?
Yes, any, any motion that's, you know, under discussion can be, a person can vote to amend the motion. Then you vote on that amendment, and then you vote on the main resolution.
Thank you very much. Orphan, I guess you have to. Thank you very much. Erfin, I guess you have to follow.
So did she get a second to her amendment?
We never got that. She hasn't gotten it for her. She was, it wasn't, it wasn't being processed through. So how can we? How can we then amend that motion properly to include both names to vote on? How do we, how do we do that?
Well, I thought you said amend the motion to amend.
I made a motion to amend and add an attorney's name to that motion that Jose just made. So I mean.
I was second.
I think Nathania, what she's saying is, she wants to amend. In other words.
I wish you would stop talking for me, Frank. I mean, I was very clear, I was very clear with what I had said. And please stop talking for me. It's very annoying and very rude.
Thank you very much. I was doing it. I apologize for my own understanding because I'm confused.
All right.
So I just want to make it, I would like to make a motion to amend and add an additional attorney's name to the resolution that Jose proposed. And that attorney's name is A G and L.
Thank you. May I have a second on that?
Second, Lisa.
Thank you. All right, now Nathaniel, our next process?
You need to vote on the adding, the amendment, you know, to the amended motion.
Okay, so we're voting to amend the motion to allow us to vote by choice on one or two attorneys. Erfin, could you call the roll to amend the motion?
Sure, I also would like to clarify one thing. I do the roll call after the President asks me to do so. So Mrs. Alvarez?
No.
Mrs. Coles?
Yes.
Mrs. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
No.
Miss Montgomery?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
No.
Ms. Racket?
No.
Mr. Chavez?
No.
Mrs. Van Buren?
Yes.
We have five no majority, so the amendment not passed.
Okay, so now you can go back to the main motion, and you can either have further discussion, Madam President, or you can go to the roll call.
Thank you, Nathaniel. All right, is there any further discussion? If not, Erfin, would you call the roll on the resolution as presented by Mr. Chavez?
Sure. Mrs. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Coles?
No.
Mrs. Lewis?
Irene?
No.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Miss Montgomery?
No.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Ms. Racket?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Buren?
No.
We have five votes to yes to motion carry.
Thank you, Erfin. Thank you, Nathaniel.
Can I just say one more thing before we, I just want to thank you, Nathania, for everything that you've done for us these past few years. I mean, we were in the trenches, and you pulled us out, and we appreciate greatly everything you've done for the district, and we wish you the best of luck with everything.
Thank you. And I just want the board to know, I certainly, if there's anything in the transition that you need my help on, I will make myself available.
Thank you, Nathaniel. We appreciate you.
Thank you, Nathaniel.
Nathaniel, I wanted to say thank you up to now, the little bit I got to know you. I think I appreciate your professionalism and very true to you to come back and help us through this process. Mr. Erfin, I apologize. You are by far, in my opinion, very on point always, and maybe I said something. I was just very confused. I was hoping that because you have so much knowledge, you kind of allow, navigate, help us navigate when we didn't have an attorney. So I apologize for that.
No problem.
And it would help if some of you would believe me that I do know a few things. I believe Nathaniel has signed off, but I would like to read a letter. I have her permission to read this letter, which she wrote to us. She had asked for the courtesy of knowing what our decision would be this evening, once we got to this vote. Personally, I think we should have, as I said earlier, would have been preferable to, no, I'm going to take this back. I'm sorry, the vote was for immediately. Thank you. It was addressed to Damian and Erfin and myself because the communication was between the three of us. "I have enjoyed being the Board Attorney for the Bogota Board of Education and wanted our relationship to continue. Over these past several years, I have resolved numerous cases and handled dozens of legal questions that have protected the district from additional litigation. I am extremely proud of the guidance and service, excuse me, services that I and my members of my firm have provided to the Bogota School District in so many areas of specialization. I believe that you have a wonderful administration and staff. They have always been responsive and cooperative with me. I am also very appreciative of the support that has been given to me by the administration. I have also appreciated the support of the Board of Education until now. I am confident that there is really no reason for choosing another counsel other than wanting a change. I believe in change. As a woman who fought for the civil rights of all people and the advancement of women in the profession of law, I understand that moving forward is important and relevant. I do not want to make this process of RFP, of new counsel, any more difficult than it needs to be. If a majority of the members of the Board want me to proceed in a new direction with new counsel, please know that I am resigning as soon as your appointment is made." So officially, Nathaniel has resigned. "I will agree to provide support for a smooth transition and will be available to answer questions for the new counselors authorized by the Board. As all the best, Nathaniel G. Simon Esquire." With that, a motion to adjourn?
Kathy, can I just say something, please?
Yes, please, Lisa.
Before we adjourn, all I keep hearing is the word change. I've heard it so many times, and change is always good. But when there's no reason or no warranted reason for change, we've been doing great for three years, and with all due respect, Nathaniel could have been kept to the end of her contract, okay? You hired an attorney who donated to your campaign. So you came in knowing nothing about Nathaniel. You knew you were getting rid of her. As soon as you won your election, you knew you had to pay back somebody, and that's what you did. And it's a shame that she didn't even get an interview, a courtesy interview. She should have at least gotten a courtesy interview so you could have known a little bit more about her firm and what they've done for the Board of Education. So like I said, change is good. We didn't need change this time. So thank you, Kathy, for giving me a moment, and motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you. Second. All in favor? Any discussion?
Aye.
Alrighty, any opposed? Good evening, everyone. Motion adjourned.
Have a good night, everyone.